Welcome to the regular city council meeting for the city of Teguka. Today is Monday, July 12th, 2021. I say that for the camera so that when you guys watch it on YouTube later on, you'll know what day it is. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, maybe seated. All right, today it looks like we've got a missing council person, but Alicia Dash is joining us by phone. Alicia, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you. Thank you so much.
Okay, so we've got, we have a full, a full council here today. Um, I'm going to make a little change here today in our agenda because we've got so many people and I want to keep you all here for an hour listening to very boring stuff. So I'm going to move to um, make our special presentation or public safety recognition up to item one. And then I want to uh, move public comments after the public's, the budget presentation. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye, we got it. It's unanimous. Okay. Let's start with the um, Chief Glenn Hasty for our public recognition.
Good evening, mayor and council. How are you? Planning commission?
Get the microphone.
All right. Uh, so we had a fire on the 16th of June on Kiwi Point. Uh, we had some heroic acts. Uh, this is, let me introduce you. This is Rashad Conwell. Uh, Rashad is a FedEx driver who was working in the community that day. He saw the fire. Uh, the fire was 8:24 Kiwi Point. When we arrived, about half the house was burning. And uh, I actually met Randy Muhammad, who was one of the other drivers or one of the other landscapers that was in the area in the street. He said I was one of the first to arrive and he also alerted the Bedard family. Uh, Rashad's with us tonight and he also alerted the family, which got the family out of the house. Uh, when we arrived, like I said, about 50% of the house was burning. Uh, without the heroic efforts of these guys, the family may not have known in time. Uh, so they were able to escape the fire and uh, to get out safely. So we appreciate what you did, Rashad. Um, we've got something for you. I've got a couple of things for you. One's for a proclamation from the mayor. The other is a certificate of recognition. Uh, it says, "In recognition for selfless acts to save a neighbor during a time of crisis in our community." And for that, we want to thank you for that. The second thing I've got is a proclamation from the mayor and I won't take time to read it to you tonight. Uh, he signed his proclamation. Uh, it is for you. Uh, "In recognition of the life-saving efforts." And we appreciate that. Uh, mayor and council, the Bedard family is here with us tonight. Uh, they would like to come up and speak if they could.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Not to downplay it, old Rashad, but um, you really did save our lives, okay, to tell you the truth. Um, we ran out of the house with no shoes, no phone, nothing. Okay, and we had probably two minutes. So what we did, and he also saved our grandson, okay, he was two years old. So what we did too is we set up a GoFundMe page. And what we did is we put together a GoFundMe page for the people in Teguka who have contributed to saving our lives, for you and Randy to share. And as of two days ago, there was $5,100 there. It's now up to $53. So we're going to run it to the end of the month. And that's, that's a minor contribution that we can do for you for saving our lives. Because you really did.
All right.
And our son is here with the two-year-old grandson. My wife ran out the front door with no shoes, him and the dog. I ran out the back door with no shoes, no phone, nothing. And I was in the room on the telephone right above the garage. So I had probably, probably had maybe a minute, maybe two minutes the most to get out of the house.
Yeah. You had a Ring video? Is that what it was, a Ring video? I saw the videos.
We also had security cameras.
Wow, unreal how fast that fire went.
Yeah. The cameras went out in two minutes.
Oh, yeah?
That's how fast they melted, the cameras around the house.
We're so glad you're safe.
Yeah.
And thanks Rashad. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And credit to the fire department either. I mean, they were unbelievable getting there and putting out the fire and helping us. So thank you.
Yes, we appreciate the fire department also. They were there, I think, within four minutes, if I remember. That's pretty good. All right, let's move on to the public hearing. Chairman Chris Leonard is going to talk about rezoning tax map number 62, 652-0000-085 and 652-0000-091 from RD in the county to Stonecrest PDD in the city as part of 100% annexation petition. Chris Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we'll open this public hearing for, as the mayor has cited, the tax map numbers 652-0000-085 and 652-0000-091. Uh, the applicant for the annexation pro- uh, application, the current property owner is proposing to annex and rezone the property to a commercial designation within the Stonecrest Plan Development District under the city's jurisdiction, jurisdiction. Property is bounded on the west by the Stonecrest PDD within the city's municipal limits, to the south by commercial centers in the county, York County, Old Terra Plantation subdivision to the east, and then it's also located on the Highway 160 corridor. Um, we have three people signed up for public comment. Uh, first is Brian McCoy. And if you, and you come to the podium, if you'd state your name and your address, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Brian McCoy. I live at 1952 Woodfield Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina. I'm an attorney in Rock Hill. And I've represented the Terra Plantation Homeowners Association. And they've asked me to come and briefly um, say a few words about a lawsuit that I was involved in that culminated in 2010. And it uh, obviously relates to the parcels in question. So back in, I think it was 2007, Ben Nash, Billy Stiegel Jr., and Joseph Stiegel brought a lawsuit against the Terra Plantation Homeowners Association. And what they alleged and requested was a declaratory judgment that their property in the Terra Plantation subdivision was not subject to restrictive covenants. There were a few other lots in the same situation as the Stiegel lots, the Nash and Stiegel lots. Um, and those parties were brought into the lawsuit also. Hoeurs at this time, the owners at that time were the Hoeurs, Valancorts, Stone, Carol Robinson and Crump. And what these, what these lots had in common for the individual parties in the lawsuit is they were at the front part of the, uh, of the Terra Plantation subdivision. As, as you all may know, you know, Old Terra, as we know, T's on to 161. There's four lots, two on either side of the entranceway, and then one lot each behind of those that on the initial plat to the subdivision back in, I don't know, maybe, yeah, maybe eighties or nineties, I'm not sure. But any, the, the original plat, which was a big part of the lawsuit, had designated those six lots. So four, can't really tell from there. Four on the road and then one on each, behind each of those two. So those six lots were part of the lawsuit. And the issue in the lawsuit was, are these six lots subject to the covenants? And the reason it was even a question, it was a non-frivolous lawsuit, um, because the original plat had labeled those six Mako Commercial Park. And then the other, I believe it was 59 lots were uh, Terra Plantation subdivisions. So these, the parties in this case, I believe, wanted the um, wanted to be not subject to the covenants because I think Walmart had just gone in across the street at the time of this lawsuit. And, you know, they wanted it to be a commercial property and sell it for more. So we had the, we, we engaged in the lawsuit. It was tried um, here in York County. And the judge ruled in our favor, the subdivision's favor, saying all of the lots are subject to the restrictive covenants. And that was appealed to the South Carolina Court of Appeals. And they ruled in our favor as well. They affirmed the decision of the circuit court. I believe, although I don't know, I don't, my memory is, it was, that was also appealed to the South Carolina Supreme Court, which denied cert. I'm not certain about that. Uh, yeah, I think so. So in any event, it's final. It's a final ruling that all these lots and, and these two, okay, the two that are on the agenda tonight are, were part of that. So what that means is that no matter what happens with annexation, I'm not here to comment on annexation. I think some of the homeowners are. But um, if, if it's annexed and if the zoning is changed to commercial, that's fine, but these will never be, as long as the restrictive covenants are still in place, this, this can never be anything except for residential, a residence. The covenants say that the lots shall be used for residential purposes only. And then they also have only single-family residents may be constructed on a given lot. And then, of course, there are the normal restrictions on residences and size and construction material and things like that. So we just wanted the board to know that even if this happens, and again, I'm not commenting on that, um, these won't be commercial lots. So we, you know, this, my client will have me enforce those covenants. Um, I did speak with the, uh, and, and then let me just go further. It's my opinion, so they also want me to give my opinion, is, is just that. Even if the zoning changes, which would then allow commercial property, it's still subject to the restrictive covenants. So the owner, even though Teguka, presumably if this all happens, Teguka would say, yes, you can have a commercial there if they change the zoning to that effect. Still, the private contract, the covenants between the owner of the property and the HOA says, no, it can only be used for residence. So they wanted the board to know that. It's not going to be a commercial property put on there, um, in my opinion. Now, of course, you asked, you talked to Bob McLeve about that, I'm sure he will, but I, I think he'll agree with me. Um, I also, Bob mentioned something to me that caught me by surprise. He mentioned the Dairy Queen. Um, and he, I guess, or maybe some people who spoke with him were under the belief that the Dairy Queen was part of Terra Plantation. And it was, it is, and I can tell you, it's never part of Terra Plantation. Um, the original subdivision plat, that just was not part of the property that was owned by the developer. Um, and in the same, you know, again, in that lawsuit, we had, the, the plat had been amended to, to name all of these lots as part of Terra Plantation. That also didn't have the Dairy Queen on it. So Dairy Queen's not a factor. We, they would have stopped it if they could have. They would have gotten me involved, but they didn't because they, it's not part of the subdivision. Um, I'm going to, of course, let the homeowners talk. Are there any questions from the board?
Very clear to me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, and we appreciate you summarizing all that for all the people who are interested. Uh, next on the list is Doug Straight. And again, Doug, if you'd state, state your name, which is the obvious, right? And then your address.
My name is Doug Straight. I live at 1642 Old Terra Lane. My home is directly behind the Dairy Queen. Uh, I was here quite a few years ago, uh, contesting the Dairy Queen project. Uh, was quite surprised that a property surrounded three sides by residential got zoned, you know, business. Uh, I cannot tell you the degradation of our neighborhood, the peace, the tranquility, the noise, the dumpsters banging all night long in the mornings. It has totally ruined our way of life in our neighborhood. And I'm sure, you know, you guys all live in Teguka, you've got some nice houses, it's nice and quiet back in here. You don't have dumpsters from Dairy Queens, the banks and all the restaurants across the street. Five days a week, from 3:30 in the morning till 5:00, 6:00, 7:00 o'clock in the morning, every one of those businesses that is across the street from us get the dumpsters emptied. And if you've ever heard these things being dumped, they're very loud. They smash them so hard that it actually vibrates our homes. It's a nuisance, you know? And that's the other thing I wanted to ask about in addition to contesting this project, is, is there an ordinance for dumpsters being emptied before 7:00 AM in the morning? If not, there should be. Nobody wants to live next door. Some of my neighbors live right behind the Fort Mill Business Center and have two dumpsters. And I can't tell you the complaints and, and the grievances that they've shared with me. It's just like every morning, you know, they get 5:30, 4:00 in the morning, those dumpsters are being banged and wakes up everybody in that area. It's very unpleasant. It's not a neighborhood. You know, in reference to these two lots, again, we don't want more commercial right next to our homes. My house is right behind the Dairy Queen. And I cannot tell you, the, the aggravation in the property just, just, has been destroyed. Every time it rains, the water sheds down from the high grade of that storm pond and just washes my yard out. I've got years and years of video, pictures. I can't keep my yard in the front yard because the watershed is just tremendous. Uh, I've, I've worked with the county, I've worked with you guys, your, your engineers and everything. We've been trying to sort through that. We've kind of got things improved a little bit. But still, to be putting business, uh, enterprises right next to homes, it's, it's not right. It's, it's, I'm sure none of you would want to live next to a Dairy Queen. You know, the speakers, the, 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 uh, you know, drive-through, it's 11 o'clock at night to listen to this stuff. The cars, the, the music that cars are playing, it's just, it's horrible. There's no peace and quiet in your home anymore. You know, so I'd ask you to take, you know, that in consideration. In addition, I had a question about all the street racing on 160. It is out of hand. The noise, these loud guys with the cars, the mufflers, it, it's just, it's horrible. Uh, you guys are probably far away from, you don't hear it, but you got to sit out there sometime in the morning from about 5:30. You even come out there tonight at 11 o'clock, they race up and down all night long. Super loud mufflers, it, it's just, it's just, it's just, uh, it's, it's bad. And you need to do something about that. I know you guys got your cruisers running around. I see them all the time. I know some of the guys. I'm also involved in a little bit of law enforcement, so we do some interaction. But something needs to be done about that. So please consider that and that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, last on the list, Ed Fritz. Again, Ed, if you would state your name and your address.
Okay, my name is Ed Fritz. I live at 24, 23 Winding Trail, which is in Terra Plantation. And uh, I'm the, I'm representing the, um, I'm the treasurer for the Homeowners Association here. And would like to repeat some of the things that, actually, I shouldn't repeat it, but just emphasize that we are in concurrence with, of course, the lawsuit that basically says that this property, the properties in question here are basically part of Terra Plantation and subject to our covenants and restrictions. Uh, also, we have petitioned everybody in our subdivision. And 58 out of the 65 homeowners have all signed a petition stating that they oppose um, the action to go ahead and, and actually rezone those, these properties here. So I just want to go and give you some of the numbers on that. So it's 58 out of 65, which I think's pretty, pretty good, pretty good, uh, indication that, uh, the homeowners here are not in favor of this. Uh, big picture is that, uh, this, as Doug was saying, is that, that we are opposed to having the, uh, the noise and all the negative stuff that comes in with businesses right up, right up into our subdivision there. And uh, we've, we've experienced some of that with the, um, Dairy Queen. And we certainly are opposed to having more of that happen on the other side of the street there. So, uh, big picture, we do not approve of this, uh, of this action. Questions?
I don't think we have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Again, thanks to the three of you for presenting your information. We appreciate it. Uh, with that, we will close the public hearing. And the planning commission will adjourn for a special meeting. And so back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. We'll let you go ahead and leave the room. And while they're leaving the room, I just want to let, yep, we're going to do the budget presentation next. So if you guys want to sit through the budget presentation, it's very interesting. It is a ball, but I guess nobody's taking me up on it. We would leave with you if we could, but. I think I got a pen leak. Oh, well, I need another shirt anyway. Didn't get on my tie. It's going to be another few minutes, Alicia. Um, it, it was a very crowded room today.
All good.
Well, stranger, where have you been?
That's the first time in 15 years I missed two meetings in a row.
Well, we were going to send somebody after you to go check on you, but.
We knew you were tougher than that.
We now have two people in the room instead of, what do you think there was, 70? 750?
Liz, did you notice that five minutes after you got here, the entire room cleared?
They were just doing the right thing. All right, let's go ahead and move on. Um, let's go ahead and start the budget presentation. Charlie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, through the conversation at the budget workshop, as well as some follow-up conversations um, in the, in the days after, uh, pleased to present to you the, the budgets for the general year. I did send you uh, this in a separate PDF earlier today as to what's on the screen. Um, looking at our tax revenue, we're forecasting a approximate 6% increase in tax revenues collected. And that's across auto, auto tax, uh, as well as property tax and penalties and things of that nature. Uh, to a $6,827,371 is what we are projecting for the upcoming fiscal year. On our license fines and fees, uh, you're looking at a, uh, at a projected 22%. Um, and that's at $4,550, uh, $541,438. Um, on our state shared revenue, a modest 7% increase there at $194,288. The rec revenue is showing as a, as an 8% downturn. Uh, but that is because in this current fiscal year, we had projected to collect about $40,000 in revenues down at the River Access. Uh, and if y'all recall the prior conversation, decided not to do that. So that's where your difference is there. Um, other than that, most of your revenue items are pretty much the exact same as what they were this current fiscal year. Uh, where we'll see that, that line item, revenue item jump will be in the 2023 year with Kataba Park. Um, and then your other revenues, um, at a 4% increase of $1,457,333. Your total general fund revenues, um, is an overall 11% increase uh, from the 11.6 million, um, this year to the $13,073,380 projected for the coming fiscal year.
Other, other income, was that the impact, impact fees?
Uh, your other revenue is where we show the impact fees. That's where we, uh, if we have surplus vehicles, equipment that we sell,
Gotcha.
Uh, your trash and recycle fee collection is all in that other revenue category.
Yes, sir.
Um, overall, across all your budgets, as I just stated, on the general fund side, 11% forecasted increase um, at $13,073,380. Your beach and swim center, a 16% increase up to $163,402. Um, TCUD at $6,151,055, and that's a 6% increase. Stormwater showing at a 5% projected increase at $597,000. Uh, our events and tourism at a 20% increase of $171,500. And your hospitality tax at a 19% increase of $345,000. Overall, across all funds, you're, you're at a 10% uh, forecasted increase uh, for a total fund of $20,501,338.
Amazing.
And if you'll bear with me, I'm going to go through each one of these funds, um, just briefly. So something I wanted to point out, uh, on a couple of the revenue trends, um, with the tax revenue trend, you can see that's steadily increasing from 2019 through the forecasted 2022. It's about a 19% increase in tax revenues with no millage increase. Uh, and that's, so that's all attributable to the, to the growth that we've had coming in, both residential and now some of the commercial, uh, that's getting built out in the Stonecrest area. So, um, good trend there, uh, seeing those numbers go up. And we do forecast our taxes, both auto and property, at a 98%, uh, 98.6% collection. Um, generally, we exceed that, but we like to use a, a conservative number there. So, um, your license fines and fees, you can see we, we, um, as we started to actually spike a little bit there, uh, in the 2020 fiscal year, uh, keep in mind, a good chunk of the COVID year was in the 2021 fiscal year, um, where you see that, um, you know, coming, coming to a head now. Um, but we are projecting, based on where we, where we're headed, um, jumping back up to that 4.5, um, uh, 4.5 million across your license fines and fees. But again, that's a total of an 18% increase from 2019 to 2022. Um, and really, the only fee increases we've had in those areas have been very minor. Uh, and they've been attributable towards developers as far as, um, they're, uh, the fees that they would pay you on coming in on new construction and things like that. But those have been minor and it was really to put them in line with what, um, other jurisdictions around us, the county and Fort Mill were charging. Overall, on your general fund, um, as, as typical, your public safety is going to make up, um, a, a huge majority of that. Um, they're at about, uh, 34, 33% there, 32%? Um, or 42%, I'm sorry. Uh, your non-departmental, uh, is, is also one of your larger ones, but that's where all your bond payments are, your trash and recycle collection fee is, all that is in that non-departmental item. So you would expect it to, to be up there pretty good. Um, council makes up less than 1%, uh, court at 2%. Um, your administration at 6%. Parks and Rec at, uh, also at 6%. Uh, development services at 4%. Uh, and your public works at 8%. Uh, with the totals for each one of those are, are shown there on the screen for you. Moving on. Budget highlights on general fund. Uh, again, no millage increase, um, is what staff is proposing. Uh, potential fee increase for recycling, and I want to circle back to that one here in just a second um, to discuss with council as far as next steps with that. Um, one new specialized patrol officer, uh, with a K-9 attached to that. Uh, three new firefighters, could potentially go to six firefighters if, if successful with a safer grant. Uh, two new employees in Parks and Recreation, plus the additional seasonal part-time staff, still envisioning having the park monitor at Windjammer. Uh, but as, with anticipating, uh, getting, at least towards the tail end of this fiscal year, needing some down at Kataba Park. Um, and then, uh, full-time municipal judge, which council will consider a resolution on that later tonight. Uh, three vehicles in PD, two are replacements and one is new for the K-9 unit, uh, and specialty unit. Uh, two new vehicles in Parks and Recreation. Um, and then here's the, here are the good ones. Uh, they're all good, but these are, these are some that have been on the list for a while. Um, happy to see these, uh, kind of getting checked off the, off the list there. Sidewalk on Windjammer Drive from Teguka Drive down to the park.
Windward.
What did I say, Wind? Oh, Windward, not Windjammer. Windward, sorry. It says Windward. Uh, Windward Drive from Teguka Drive to the park. Um, so from that crosswalk that dead ends at the fire station,
Oh, yeah, yeah.
going back down, um, towards the other sidewalk. Um, uh, trail, uh, from Beach Club Trail to Stonecrest Boulevard. Um, and then a remodel of the exterior of the Parks and Rec office to make it resemble the new buildings that we've constructed recently and remodeled. Um, get that vinyl siding off of it, put the Hardy plank, the stone base on it, um, give it a nice clean look and match all the rest of the buildings, as well as paving that parking, that gravel parking lot and then connecting it to the city hall parking lot. So if folks are coming in and out to visit our Parks and Rec staff, they can exit at the traffic light instead of in that curve. Um, the entryway will still, um, they'll still be able to pull in where they currently pull in, but, um, they can also come in off of the city hall lot once that's done. So all of those are in the general fund, um, in the general fund budget. And with all of that, you've got about 600 And with all of that, you've got about six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars worth of capital improvements. And you're still got an operational contingency of approximately two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And Bob Barkin and I think that there's potentially anywhere between two and four hundred thousand dollars in additional revenues that may materialize by probably April, May timeframe. And as those do materialize, we'd like to come back to council and have some conversations about some further capital projects that could possibly be taken on.
What's the cost to pave a parking lot like, like the beach and swim center?
To pay, oh, the, the gravel lot down there? I'd hate to even throw out a number, Mayor, but we can absolutely get a cost for it. That, that is definitely a need for certain.
Yes, sir.
Yep. So that is the general fund. Now, if we can go back a second on the potential increase on recycling fees. So York County has increased the tipping fee for recycling. They went from thirty-five dollars a ton to fifty dollars a ton. It's now more expensive to do recycling than it is trash. The tipping fee for trash is forty-five dollars per ton. So what I would like to recommend, it was actually Ms. Overman's idea, I think it's a great idea. Before we just propose a, a new fee, an additional fee, because you're talking an additional thirty cents per house per month.
Say it again.
An additional, to, to cover this, it'd be an additional thirty cents per house per month, added on to their trash and recycle fee. Instead of just adding that fee to it, right now, we're, we're covering it. What I'd like to do is, what, what I'd like to propose is, we put out a survey to the citizens with two questions. Do you want to pay the fee and continue with the service? Do you want to cancel, cancel the service and, and, and remove that service? At which point, we would be able to reduce their fee by a dollar twenty-five per month. For the recycling side, we'd still have the trash service, still have to pay for that, still got that going. We have about every third load gets rejected on recycling. They sent us some stats today. About five percent of our loads are getting rejected, going to the landfill. Obviously, with this new fee, it actually saves us money by kicking it out and sending it to the landfill.
But five percent doesn't, it was way up more than that before, wasn't it? Five percent seems like it's very good.
Five percent does seem very good. That's, that's year-to-date for 2021, from January until now. Yes, sir. That was the stats that they sent over today. I was surprised, I, I thought it would be higher.
Were we hitting in the thirties or?
Higher percent, yeah.
So they, they literally unload the truck, and somebody goes and inspects it, and if it doesn't, they load it back up in the truck.
If it's got too many bags, too much glass, yard debris, things like that, they say, nope. It gets pushed to the side, and then they carry it over, they push it into a dumpster, and it gets saved to the landfill. And we actually save money that way on the contaminated load. But obviously, the folks that do care about recycling, that are trying to recycle, now their stuff's going into the landfill.
I like recycling personally. I heard Heather does, I'm not sure.
Yeah, with, with.
We're talking three dollars and sixty cents more per year, thirty cents per month.
It's, it's not an astronomical amount, but I do recognize the fact that council got a lot of backlash when we started charging for recycling, that additional buck twenty-five, which is, which is why I mentioned it.
Just from Walt.
But I mean, the two, the two choices to either pay the three sixty a year or
Get rid of it completely.
Do your own recycling, if you so choose to, and carry it to Baxter.
You'll pay three sixty just on one load.
Yeah.
Carrying it to Baxter. I mean, that's just, that's a no.
Just need some direction on which way you want to go.
But this way, let the people decide, and whatever it comes out to be, then that's what it is.
Let them decide, just let, make sure they know it's thirty cents a month.
Mm-hmm. Oh, absolutely.
I don't think there'd be any backlash for that.
I wouldn't think so, but I didn't think there'd be a whole lot of backlash over the buck twenty-five either. And people were not happy about that one. So we will, we will get that survey going, and we'll run it for a couple of weeks, and we'll make council aware of what those results are. So when we come back to you with the fee schedules and everything else, it'll either be in there, or we'll, we'll be having a separate conversation.
And that would be as of October first?
Do I know?
The new fee would be as of October first?
No, it started July one. Yes, sir. We, we decided to not have that new fee hit.
Right, well, I'm saying, when would it be on the bill, if they?
It would, it would start with their first bill in October, yes, sir.
Okay.
Their first utility bill that they got in October.
I got to rebudget thirty cents a month.
All right. So that is the general fund. Beach and Swim Center, you can see that in 2020, obviously, it took a nasty downturn, but it, it has started to rebound. And actually, we're forecasting for next year being back up close to the 2019. We've already actually canceled, blocked off, no longer allowing memberships this year. We're full. So that budget is performing very, very nicely. If y'all recall back last spring, I did not, did not have that same hope. So it, it is looking well. Couple of minor issues with the management company that I addressed with them today. We'll see how the rest of the summer goes there, but we will be bidding that contract out this fall. The current contract goes through December. So your highlights, not a lot to say here down at the beach club, but we do envision replacing over the winter months, putting in a new pump for the baby pool, doing some repairs to the concrete deck around the pool. And again, no fee increases is what we're proposing there. On your T-cud, those budgets have been trending upwards. It's part and parcel because of the pass-through increases that we've been receiving from Fort Mill Rock Hill, and part of it's because of the increase in just our customer base overall, is why you've seen that budget be able to grow. With T-cud, no increase on the water rate. Rock Hill is not forecasting any more water rate increases, at least for the next few years. This would be the last of the sewer rates that they have forecasted necessary to fund the expansions at the sewer plant in Rock Hill due to the capacity increases from us, Fort Mill, things of that nature. So we've all had those increases. It's about fourteen cents per thousand gallons. That started July one. We have been handling that through the T-cud budget to hold that off until the new fiscal year, to, to implement that fee. So you will see that on the fee schedule when we bring this to you in, in an ordinance format. They do envision, and they would be, these would be cash purchases, not finance, but purchasing a, an additional UTV, utility terrain vehicle.
Go ahead, someone's calling me.
Oh, okay. And a crane lift attachment for the service truck would be the two purchase, bigger purchases there. It does have, if you'll recall, approximate seven hundred thousand operational contingency, looking to use a chunk of those funds to help supplement some of the ARP funds once we finally get those in, to go towards those treatment plant projects that have been identified in your engineering report.
You still there, Alicia?
I am still here, I am still here.
Okay, somebody was, had an incoming call, I'll just make sure it didn't interrupt you.
Stormwater budget, obviously, that has been increasing, and that fee has remained the same for a number of years. You're showing a, we're showing an eleven percent increase in revenues from 2019 to 2022, looking at the five hundred ninety-seven thousand, and that's just growth. Both commercial, impervious surface space, you know, the Stonecrest Business Park, the, the area where Model A and Excoff and Topper's are right now. And I do hear a Cinnabon-type store is going to be moving in there pretty soon. So it's not Cinnabon, but something like that. So good place for us to then go get insulin shots somewhere afterwards. So stormwater budget's trending nicely. Again, not recommending any, any fee increase there. The big, big one here, and this is going to be, this is going to be huge for staff and our service delivery for the residents, getting an additional front-end loader and dump truck that'll help, we'll, those things run pretty much three, four days a week, every week of the year, picking up curtside debris and things of that nature. And then an additional, not a replacement, but an additional LEFAH truck. By the time that gets in, it wouldn't help us for, for this coming fall. By the time we get it ordered and it gets built, but for fall of 2022, going into 2023, we would have that out there with the other one to help speed up that, that service delivery on the loose leaf collection from October to February. So we'll bring that, as well as the things from general fund that I mentioned previously in the form of a resolution for council to approve at your November council meeting. H-tax, I didn't bother with the, putting a trend on the events tourism, because it's really just generated by your sponsors and your H-tax funds going into it. But I did cover some highlights. Your H-tax trend is looking great. We look to have probably finished this fiscal year at about three hundred and thirty-five to three hundred and forty thousand dollars. It's fantastic. Shore Club and Model A, Nothing Bunk Cakes, believe it or not, are our top three, and they are killing it. They are doing a phenomenal job. So as are the rest, but Model A and, and Shore Club are far and above, you know, carrying it. They're, they're getting to the point where they're averaging about thirty-five hundred dollars plus a month, which is fantastic, both of them. So we're forecasting next year, possibly conservatively, but with not knowing what new may be coming in, you know, we're, we're, we feel very comfortable with the three hundred and forty-five thousand that we're forecasting for hospitality tax next year. And again, you've seen a twenty-two percent increase in H-tax revenues from 2019 to 2022. Your budget highlights, this is events and hospitality tax. The biggest change on your event side of things, one, events programmer, we've got that full salary in there, plus our public safety maintenance staff, along with a, a small portion of Joey's, are in the event side of things. We have increased, increased our expenses for the Fourth of July for next year, bumped that up to forty thousand dollars. It is our fortieth anniversary. And even if it wasn't, the fireworks were going to be a lot more expensive next year. So it's a good time for them to be more expensive, because we want a bigger show for the fortieth, although I think they did a phenomenal job this year.
I don't know how you're going to beat the fireworks this year.
They were fantastic, but we are actually going to be, we've already started those planning activities and should be meeting in the next couple of weeks with the firework company about a proposed location up here with bigger shells that get higher in the air. So we're going after it. It does also include, in our H-tax side of things, a revamp of the city's website. It's been quite some time since we've done that. And then we've got a fifty thousand dollar transfer from H-tax to the Catawba Park Fund as we had programmed and planned for. And it also includes the final payment on the lights up at Rundy Park. So we'll finish that, that purchase payment there and finish that up. So, Mr. Mayor and council, that is the budget presentation for FY twenty-one, twenty-two. Mayor, you and I were talking before the meeting, doing the public hearing and going ahead and doing a first read in August, and then just doing the second read in September, instead of doing a special meeting in September due to your absence. Totally fine with me if, if council's good with that at this point.
That's great.
Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for
Thank you very much.
Public comments, unless y'all have got questions.
Looks, our, our budget looks great, Charlie. It's really amazing, after going through COVID, I thought the worst.
Yes, sir.
And it looks like we're going to come out of this thing better than ever.
Quite well. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you much. Let's go to public comments. Either one of y'all have any public comments? Who's that?
Chris counts too.
Oh, you, do you, did you have something to bring from, okay. All right, let's move on to item number four, approval of minutes. Council, you've read the regular meeting and the special meeting minutes. Do you have any additions, subtractions, deletions, changes? Seeing none here or none. Alicia, you got any changes?
No, no changes.
All right, the minutes stand as published. Let's go to committee reports, economic development with Gus.
So the EDC met on June the twenty-eighth. There was a quorum. Probably the biggest thing that was discussed was business incubator program details. They're splitting into two groups. The big, the big talk was about who, who do we bring in? So split it into two groups, start with like design and professional services, engineers, graphic designers, architects, things like that. And then get a foothold there and move into retail, food, and others elsewhere. They formed a committee to check on home-based businesses that are already in T G K. They might be looking to get out of their home and get into a building with, with some assistance. Heather had done some research on some model programs, and that was discussed as well. Formed a subcommittee to study the types of businesses to recruit, mainly for the area that is now either called Graceland or Game Off. I like that. So, and they did, the chairman was going to reach out to retail strategies to specifically recruit businesses for the age-restricted areas that are proposed. And they discussed where and how can art money be spent, and some of the qualifications and restrictions on doing that. And that was it.
All right, thank you. Planning Commissioner Alicia, you have any reports?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. So the commission canceled their regular July meeting in lieu of the special meeting and joint public hearing. That was, that's being held this evening. But in addition to that, just want to add that commissioner liaison activities continue. Commissioners continue to work on a bike and pedestrian prioritization list that we shared drafts with you before. And the stormwater recommendations are continuing to be revised, and we anticipate that that item will be brought to city council at our August meeting. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Let's move to the forever foundation with Heather.
I don't have too many updates. We did meet June seventh. Right now, the Southern Builders is installing silt fencing and clearing. They may, they'll hopefully start grading sometime next week. Just wanted to encourage people, if you haven't already purchased your brick for Catawba Park, I would encourage you to do so. Just so everybody knows, we have a total of a thousand sixty-two bricks to sell. Once they are gone, they are gone, and we will only have this open for about a six-month period of time. So end of January, early February, that will close out. So if you have not purchased, do it, because it's a limited supply and a limited time, and that's it. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to item six, unfinished business. This is the second reading of an ordinance amending chapter two, article five, divisions two and three of the city's code of ordinance. This is the second reading of a reading, this is the second and final reading of an ordinance to update the city's code of ordinances in reference to purchasing budget and fiscal control policy. City council gave a favorable first read to this ordinance at the June twenty-first meeting. Any questions or comments? All right, let's do a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance amending chapter two, article five, divisions two and three of the city's code of ordinances, purchasing budget and fiscal control policy.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second from Gus. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 It's unanimous. Let's go to item seven, new business. Let me catch up here. Seven, a new business, consideration of a performance labor, materials security agreement and reduction of a letter of credit for Windhaven Phase One. The engineer of Lennar Corporation has submitted a request for reduction in the original certainty for the completion of the infrastructure for Windhaven Phase One. The original letter of credit issued on May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty was in the amount of one million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. The reduced amount requested is three hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, which constitutes a reduction of one million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, seeing none.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the reduction of a letter of credit for Windhaven Phase One, contingent upon approval of the form and substance of the LOC by the city attorney.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heather Overman. You tried, so.
Good try, Gus.
Yeah.
You'd have been the first.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 It's unanimous. Let's go to six B. I'm sorry, seven B. This is the city's current communication policy that was developed and approved in 2013 prior to having a public information officer for the city. Now that we have that position, and because it is good to review policies like this from time to time due to the ever-evolving communications platform, staff is requesting that we consider this updated policy. The city attorney has reviewed the document and informed the city manager. He has no legal concerns with the document. Any questions or comments? Charlie, what is the major change in this?
Really, really, the biggest, the biggest thing is, is funneling all, all communications through Joseph, our P I O. So as, as we get bigger, as we've got more things going on, as members of the media reach out to y'all, making sure, or reach out to any of the staff members, making sure we're including Joseph, funneling through him, is, is really your, your overall theme as far as the changes. Joseph, I think, did a great job. He looked at, at nine different cities' communication policies and was able to pull a lot of those in, into what you've got before you tonight.
Is he still doing our social media?
Yes, sir.
Doing a great job of that, too. Doing a great job with that, too.
Yes, sir.
He's got more followers on that page from out of Tika K than I bet he does from inside Tika K.
A lot of people love it.
I would bet you it's pretty close.
A lot of people love it.
People in Rock Hill come up to me and says, who is your, who does your, who does your Tika Facebook page?
When we get submissions from Ms. Overman, last night helping out, those are fantastic.
Yeah.
That helps, most certainly.
I'm glad you put on there that you gave him permission, because I was going to say, uh-oh, somebody's in trouble. All right, let's do a motion. All at once.
Motion to approve the updated city communication policy.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All, it's unanimous. Let's go to 7C. Make sure I'm on the right page here. All right, this is a resolution appointing our new chief municipal judge. Judge Justin Bice has submitted his 90-day notice for termination of his contract effective August 26, 2021. This resolution appoints Donna Dorado as the city's chief municipal judge to fill the unexpired term of Judge Bice through September 30, 2023. Very good. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution appointing Donna Dorado as the chief municipal judge and to fill the unexpired appointment vacancy.
I have a motion of a, and a second from Alicia Dash. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Another unanimous. All right, we're going to item 7D, which is consideration of approval of easements necessary for Duke Energy Power Enhancement Project. And because Councilwoman Dash works for Duke, she is recusing herself on this. All right, so this is during our May city council meeting, Duke Energy gave a presentation on their proposed enhancement project that is slated to begin this fall. As part of the enhancement project, the need, they need easement from the city, which our city manager will discuss with us tonight. City manager Charlie Fundenberg.
So as we were working through trying to get the easement, they couldn't give us meats and bounds, which we typically provide to y'all when folks want encroachment, you know, onto the golf course or the Cindy Greenbelt, things like that. So Bob McLeve and I met with representatives from Duke Energy, as well as from Pike, Matthew Vaughn, their project manager, and all came to a, kind of found a workaround to get us where we all need to be. So what we would be giving them at this point is the right to come onto our property. And the property we're talking about starts at the eastern end of the Memorial Gardens. So technically, it starts on Fort Mill School District property, that grassy area just past the Memorial Gardens, coming down that sidewalk, which now gets back into DOT right away, as well as some city property, down in front of Trailhead Park, and then down the walking trail to where the overhead lines are beside Turner Field. So if you took those lines straight across, it would terminate there. So that's what we're giving them right of access to, all right? They would then come back after they've installed those, those underground utilities and provide us with as-bills, and that's what would go and get recorded with the necessary easement agreements. That way, we know exactly where it is, it's got the meats and bounds, and things of that nature. So it's, it's a good work, workaround for something as complex as this. We did include in your packet their work map. If you follow the red line through that, shows you where they're going. Obviously, they, they have agreed to, and we are requiring that everything goes back to the way it was, once they're done. So there will be some interruptions, most certainly, based on the timing of this, with it being in the fall, and we'll work with them, but we'll probably take the point on making sure, you know, them giving us the information and us pushing it out in a timely fashion, because there will be times where, you know, the whole walk to school, it's going to be interrupted for, you know, a week, where they're just not going to be able to go through that area. Yeah, there'll be parts, there'll be days on the trail where you're not going to be able to use that into the walking trail until it gets past Metta View, and then you'd have to reroute from Metta View over to Trail Ridge. But once, really, once they get, you know, up to Metta View, they're getting to, past Metta View, they're getting towards the tail end, because they're terminating long before they get to Trail Ridge. So we'll be coordinating with their project manager and their team, making sure those communications go out in a timely fashion, quite certain that we'll still hear from some folks that had no idea that this was being done, but that's what, that's what this is. So council blesses it tonight. Bob McLeve will be working with them to put the encroachment agreement, the right of access agreement together in a form and substance that he recommends for the city. If council blesses this, then I'll be able to go ahead and execute it, and they'll be able to put their wills in motion. And then we'll have the subsequent easement agreement that, again, with your motion tonight, if approved, I'll be able to go ahead and execute, and we'll be able to get that recorded once they've got us.
So the service interruptions you're talking about is both in power and on use of?
You won't have, you won't have any power service interruptions. It'll just be some temporary interruptions in the usage of the sidewalk along the Tika Drive, Gold Hill side of the Memorial Gardens. And then for a certain short, what they tell us are a short period of time on the walking trail, or parts of that walking trail coming up to-
And this is being done to get rid of the overhead wires out in the Chelsea Day Lane area?
Yes, sir.
It's so prone to power interruptions.
Well, that, that's the, the next phase of it. So this, this gets the, the infrastructure underground on this end, so that they can eliminate the overhead lines coming into the city by way of coming up through Turner. Then they're going to move the, they're going to do the, if you'll recall, the, what they call line hardening. This will be back behind Marsh Hind area, where they'll be moving those old wood poles out of the creek, a little bit higher up onto the bank and to our greenway, and then they're going to do Chelsea a day. Their schedule says that their start, they anticipate starting in September, but being finished by February with all of it, including the Chelsea a day in. Yes, sir.
Sounds good. I know they've been waiting for that for a long time.
Yes, sir. It'll be a fantastic project.
Any other questions for Charlie? You got it, Alicia's recused herself, so let's do a motion.
Motion approved, the right of entry by Duke Energy, and their signs onto city property for the purposes of enhancing the reliability of the power supply to the city and authorize city manager to execute all necessary documents related to this project once approved as their form and substance by the city attorney.
I have a motion of a second.
Second.
I guess, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous with one recusal.
Yes, sir.
All right, let's go to the city manager report, item eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. First, want to start off amazing 4th of July celebration, absolutely amazing. We're, Katie Rostowitz had told us that, you know, earlier in the week when they were forecasting bad weather, she was just going to go home and do some voodoo. The next day, the forecast changed. We're all a little scared of Katie now in the office, but fantastic job, one of her, you know, her first big event with us. She did an outstanding job. Special thanks to city council, Joey Blethyn, our Parks and Recreation staff, Public Works staff, and our public safety staff with PD and Fire. I'd also like to give a big thank you to our Public Works and Park Maintenance staff that were involved in the cleanup of the, on July 2, after that storm came through late on July 1. We lost some trees, mainly in the Lake Shore area, but they teamed up, worked hard, and got a, most of it cleaned up before we rolled into the 4th of July weekend, and that took some special effort on their part, and really, really want to thank them. Also want to thank, make sure we thank Piedmont Medical, Model A Brewery, and Carolina Golf Cars, along with all of our other community sponsors for making, making that, all those events possible on such an amazing, amazing weekend. And staff's already begun planning next year. As I mentioned earlier, it's the city's 40th. We want to make it another fantastic weekend. We will have parade, fish fry, fireworks on same day next year, with it being on a Monday, but still doing the ski show on Friday night, still doing a concert on Saturday. And Model A says they want to go even bigger with the concert next year, so.
They want to do what?
They want to go even bigger with the concert next year, so.
So Sunday will be the day of rest next year.
Sunday will be the timeout period, yes, sir. Everybody take a pause and then get ready for all the events on Monday, yes, sir. We're excited about the coming fiscal year and all that it'll have in store for the city. Far and above the best budget that I think that's been put forth in my years of service with the city. Not only is council acknowledging the hard work and dedication of staff, and that is greatly appreciated, we're also implementing some very exciting projects with the sidewalk on Windward, the trail from, over to Stonecrest from the Beach and Swim Center Trail. And then on top of all that, we're going to be opening Catawba Park, you know, a huge chunk of it. So really, really excited about 2022 and all that it has in store for us. Last couple of things, I had a great meeting right after the 4th with Gail Scroggs, the principal of Fort Mill High School, about getting the Coffee Bean message in the high school this fall. He's really excited about that, this coming Wednesday, a meeting with leadership from Gold Hill Middle, Tika K Elementary, Gold Hill Elementary, and Kingstown Elementary, about getting Coffee Bean Club started at their school this coming year. They're already excited about it, so looking forward to that meeting. It's always great when we get a chance to partner with the schools on programs and initiatives. Municipal Association annual meeting this coming weekend. I know Ms. Overman, Ms. Ash is attending that, and look forward to hearing all that you learn while you're mixing and mingling and learning with the leaders from around the state. I hope that's a great conference for y'all. And last, but not least, I am going to take a vacation next week. While I'm out, I'll, I will have access, periodic access to emails, but if it is urgent, reach out to Joey Blethyn. He is prepped and ready for that, and he will keep me in the loop.
Well, just pass on that the grounds and the trees being trimmed all looked fantastic.
Yes, sir.
Everything, I get to see it up close and personal, because I get to walk the whole thing, but it really, really, really looked good.
Yep, crews did an excellent job, absolutely. Very proud of them.
All right, any comments or questions of Charlie, before we go to council comments?
I do have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Golf cart parade winners, are we doing that this year?
In August.
August.
Bringing that, we're going to bring the, the winners only, but Katie is working on that, got the prizes, did get the prizes in, in time for this one, but we are slating that for the August meeting, yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you.
And is the boat parade pretty much done, just lack of interest?
Yes, sir.
I mean, two people.
A lot of people that like to watch it from their docks were disappointed we weren't doing it. If they would participate in it, we could probably still have it. But, I mean, if somebody wants to, if a volunteer wants to spearhead it and has enough boats, we'll absolutely support it. But I think since Tom Trem, once Tom Tremblay stopped, you know, kind of spearheading that, I think the last time we did it, we had 10 boats, and one of them was the police boat. So it's kind of hard to put a whole lot into it, which is just, just the nine boats.
And the log roll and all that stuff, the joust.
That was, that was stuff that the ski team did, and at this point, they have not indicated that they are interested in continuing that. So, but obviously, as we plan for next year, if that's something they want to bring back, then obviously, we will support them in those efforts and try to make that happen.
All right.
And just to reiterate before you're done, sidewalk?
On Windward. Windward by Rundy, from the fire station at Rundy on Windward.
It goes from Rundy to the, to the TK Drive.
It goes from the crosswalk down to, down to Rundy Park, yes, sir. Down to the-
On the left side as you're going out.
Left side as you're going out, right side coming in. Yes, sir. Same side where the other sidewalk is.
Yeah.
On Windward.
Windward.
Yes, sir.
Just clarify.
Absolutely. It is on Windward.
All right, let's do council comments, we'll start with Ryan.
Nah, I'm good.
Doesn't have any-
Thanks to Police and Fire as usual, Charlie's staff, you guys do a great job, great budget. Thanks for all you do.
Alicia, you got anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things, just want to reiterate my thanks and job well done for 4th of July. Katie, she did an awesome job, thanks for the backup golf cart. That was great thinking on her, on her side, so I really appreciate that. And of course, all of our maintenance crews, public safety, Parks and Rec, Charlie, thank you, you guys did an awesome job. Also wanted to just thank Charlie for his work on the budget. You know, this budget keeps getting better and better every year. I'm super excited, I appreciate the opportunity to ask questions and provide feedback to that, and, and especially for, you know, listening to council member Overman and I's additional requests and advocating for, for the sidewalks to the park off of Windward, like, you know, we just mentioned, and then also the trail from the Beach and Swim Center to Stonecrest. I know those were big items, and we were able to get those in the budget so far this year, so thank you for that. And then, let's see, very last, we just want to say thank you to mayor and council for accommodating, of course, my, my virtual attendance today. Now, it makes things a little bit more difficult, but I appreciate your flexibility. Thanks, guys.
No problem. Heather?
Just reiterate what everybody else already said, it was a wonderful 4th. Even though it was a weekend, I was still tired by the end of it, I don't know how that's possible. I don't know how we do it all in one day, I forget how that feels, but, you know, I was still pretty exhausted, but it was, it was awesome, and Public Works, Parks and Rec staff, Katie, great, great, great job. Awesome.
Gus?
Same, same. I, you just want to thank everybody on staff, not only for a fantastic 4th, but also for all the hard work on the budget. I agree, I'm, I'm excited about the upcoming year, and, you know, obviously, especially about Catawba Park. One of my coworkers was listening to a podcast and told me something interesting, I think